You ready to go? All right, we're calling this meeting to order at five o'clock. Are there any comments from the public on the closed session items? Is there anyone online, Dave? And no one's in here, so we'll adjourn to closed session.
All right, one second. All right, I reconvene this meeting at 6:03 PM. And I will have Board Trustee Cloud lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Wonderful, thank you very much. Now we get to start our meeting with the best stuff, the special recognition. So we're going to start with a school report from McNear Elementary.
We are some of the McNear Student Leadership Team at McNear Elementary. We are excited to share some of the reasons we love McNear. Our library is incredible. Ms. Donnie has made it off the hook and we just got a $15,000 grant from Petaluma Educational Foundation.
We have a cozy, we have a cozy reading nook, a Lego wall, a sequin wall. Thank you. A sequin wall, a Hogwarts room. The library is busy hub during recess for reading, playing games, Legos, and it's also a nice place to relax and find a good, a great book.
Gogo, our school turtle lives in our library. Gogo loves having us read to her and giving her snacks.
Gogo loves getting mail. She even has her own mailbox and stationery. You should definitely come visit her.
Our school sits alongside Thompson Creek, which is a perfect campus for our environmental literacy program. We have a bird habitat, a garden, and Kirsten Franklin leads a dedicated group of community programs to help us understand the importance of taking care of our planet. We love environmental literacy. Did you know that we have seven species of bats at McNear? Join us for our famous bat night.
We encourage creativity in our makerspace. We have an entire classroom filled with gadgets, trinkets, thingies, whatever, and cardboard. We just completed a school-wide challenge to make a freestanding marble ones. Next month, we are making puppets.
Our robotics.
Our robotics class is one of my favorites, not just because my dad teaches it, but we learn so many interesting things. We build Lego robots and code them. Everyone is welcome and we love competing in the county competition. We have our 100th Day of School tomorrow where we dress up like we are 100.
We love spirit days. Jazz hands. Every Friday, we wear our McNear wear or school colors for a friendly competition. We also help raise $66,000 for PTA by cheering with pom poms to remind parents of our move-a-thon. Our most spirited classroom keeps our beloved McNear icon for the week.
Our upper graders can apply for our school leadership team. There's two teams that plan school events and are the voice of students. Students must write an essay and interview to be selected.
It's a great learning opportunity. We meet twice a month and help write our school expectations.
We're currently in rehearsals for The Wizard of Oz and we have 88 cast members. We have three shows per year, one drama, one musical.
Everyone, I'm short. Everyone who auditions has a part and no one's left out because of finances. Please come to one of our shows, you won't be disappointed.
We are so lucky to have so many talented teachers and staff. They care about us and do their best to make sure we all have access to learning. We are a family at McNear and everyone is included.
McNear rocks!
Awesome, thank you guys. You guys have been busy. What don't you do at McNear?
That would be amazing, board members, because then we can put this in our yearbook. All right, awesome. Okay, one, two. Awesome, thank you.
That was amazing. Thank you Falcons, starting our meeting off strong. Oh, got a walkout song and everything, okay. Awesome, what a good start to tonight, y'all. I'm feeling good. Next up, we have a presentation from Petaluma Rotary, the Lenda Hand Education Grants.
Come up a little bit. All right. Thank you Superintendent Harris and board members. It's great to be here again on our annual visit. Now today, Dave Hansen and I are here with good news. Rotary is again donating financial support for additional education opportunities in our schools. We represent Petaluma Valley Rotary and Petaluma Sunrise Rotary Clubs with our Lenda Hand Education Teacher Grant Program, which over the last 20 years has raised nearly $340,000 to fund these grants in all the Petaluma area schools, including private schools. So this program demonstrates that a community working together can make a difference in children's education. Rotary members believe that we have a shared responsibility to take action on our world's most persistent issues, which include literacy and education, both here at home and internationally. So this year, our two Rotary Clubs awarded 90 grants to teachers in 20 Petaluma schools totaling $21,614. Of that total, $11,912 supported 50 teacher grants in 10 schools of your Petaluma City School District. Now that check for $11,912 is not with me because it's already been presented to the district so they can distribute it to those teachers to go ahead and fund those grants. And Dave is going to tell you a little bit about some of the fund grants we had this year.
One of the things that people ask me frequently when I'm talking about the Lenda Hand Program is, well, what does this money go for? So here, I'm going to give you an example of one, one project from each school that the grants went for. This year Casa Grande Jennifer Titus was running a, got a grant for some materials for use in labs on biotechnology, genetic engineering, bioluminescence, gene extraction. So if you know what that is, you know that's probably a good thing. At Petaluma, Hillary Smith is arranging for a Broadway masterclass to be taught by members of a Broadway show who are going to be visiting in the area. I think they're visiting in San Francisco and several members of the class are going. The fund supports that sort of thing. San Antonio Marissa Burrows is getting art supplies for an art project and also for some Spanish vocabulary and grammar aid for her students. Kennelworth High School, Junior High School, Renee Chaffin, books for English language learners. And this is one where the students generally, who generally find themselves in a family situation where the language spoken is not English, find themselves somewhat behind in English development. And these are books that are specifically designed to bring them along faster and catch them up. Live Oak Charter, a series of books, history books focusing on early American history and ancient civilizations. McDowell was an Academy of Science Field Trip is being supported by this grant. McKinley, it was a field trip to Petaluma Bounty Farm for some kindergarteners. McNear, 12 teachers received grants for decodable readers, which are reader books that are apparently give some diagnostic information about reading difficulties. And when I asked about that, I say, what is that? And some of the people in our group were teachers who said, oh, this is good stuff. And they started to explain it. But it helps in the diagnostics for solving reading problems amongst the students. At Penn Grove, there are, kindergarten group is going to be advanced in terms of learning schools, learning tools, a letter recognition, literacy, fine motor skills, generally materials that go to those sorts of things. So that's the sort of thing that we're doing, that the teachers are doing with this. And we were very happy that it always seems to work. And it's nice to be able to explain to people when they ask, what's this money do? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to our Rotary and all the community support that we see in Petaluma City Schools. And for all the kids and all the students across Petaluma, it's really inspiring and really important. So we thank you for all of that. Next up, we're going to recognize some of the students that y'all help. First, we're going to recognize Students of the Month from Petaluma High. Or is it, I think Casa Grande, it's in order in two different places on my list. So I think, yeah, Petaluma is already up here. I think we can figure out the slideshow.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. Also, Happy New Years, even though it's the 30th, but still Happy New Years. So, okay, I'm going to be presenting Student of the Month for Petaluma High School. And first up, we have Anna Graham. So Anna Graham is a senior at Petaluma High School and has been a student for all four years. Anna is an active member of the Petaluma High School community within athletics and sports. Anna is a four-year girls soccer player and a two-year varsity soccer player. Anna is also an active member in the Petaluma FFA chapter where she serves as the chapter secretary and competes in dairy judging team, in the, on the dairy judging team in the local, regional, and state level competitions and consistently placed within the top five competitors at each competition. Anna plans to attend Chico State or Fresno State to study veterinary science and pursue a career in large animal veterinary medicine. Congratulations, Anna.
Do we have Anna's friends and family here? We want to recognize your contributions to, yeah, stand up, stand up. Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have Maya Hoffman. So Maya is a senior at Petaluma High School. Over the past four years, she has been involved with many aspects of the school community. Since freshman year, Maya has been a member of the girls varsity tennis team and competed in all, in four seasons. Between practices and matches, she's enjoyed leading warmups and helping new players learn the rules of the game. The Link Crew Program has provided an additional opportunity for her to foster a sense of community between under and upperclassmen. As a Link Crew leader, for the past two years, she has helped freshmen gain confidence and find support. Maya loves hiking and exploring the outdoors. She brings her passions for sustainability onto campus as co-president of the Eco Fashion Club. The organization is dedicated to lowering everyday impacts on the environment, especially through thoughtful clothing consumption. Maya helped organize a school-wide clothing drive and held the first ever thrift sale at Petaluma High School to spread awareness regarding the environmental consequences of clothing waste. Since 2018, Maya has volunteered at the Petaluma Historical Library and Museum where she's able to archive artifacts and organize research materials for the museum historians. She enjoys connecting with the unique heritage of our own town. As a member of the Junior Commission on the Status of Women of Sonoma County, Maya is working on the local reproductive rights advocacy, compiling research on teen-oriented clinics. She has helped create a website, Instagram page, and flyer campaign to spread awareness regarding countywide resources for local youth. Collaborating with the CHOPS Teen Center in Santa Rosa, Maya has had the opportunity to connect with peers discussing both contemporary issues and solutions. Currently, she is working on a survey report regarding the data collected from over 35 nearby pharmacies. Throughout high school, Maya has taken the opportunity to pursue her passion for math and science. She has also helped classmates as a math and honors chemistry tutor. This fall, Maya is looking forward towards the major in chemistry at a university. Congratulations, Maya.
Congratulations, Maya. Do we have Maya's friends and family here in the audience? If you all can stand or wave or whatever you prefer. Awesome, thank you Drake. And now we'll have Casa Grande, come on up.
First, I'm going to recognize Lynn Jen. Thank you. Lynn Jen is a Casa Grande senior who loves making anything with a computer, whether it is 2D graphic design, 3D models, videos, video games, or even building computers themselves. At school, her favorite classes include calculus, physics, and statistics. She helps to study computer science with a focus on game design in college, allowing her to combine the math and science she enjoys learning about with a creative expression in games. Lynn is a four-year, this is Lynn's fourth year organizing Super Smash Bros. tournament at the Big House Library and her third year as captain of Casa Grande's Varsity Smash Esports Team. She and her teammates play in an online CIF league against hundreds of schools and briefly ranked first in state last season. Building Casa's Smash community from the ground up and seeing it flourish is one of her proudest high school accomplishments. She has also supported Petaluma's community at large by lurking in a local correlation of focusing on making the city public transportation more efficient. Outside of studying and playing and making games, Lynn spends her time hanging out with her cat, devouring science fiction, generally exploring the significance of the universe and appreciating, or appreciating the beings and experiences in it. Congratulations, Lynn.
Congratulations Lynn. And obviously, we have Lynn's family in the audience. Congratulations to the Jen family. Awesome.
Now I'll be recognizing Ruby Frederick. Ruby is a senior at Casa Grande. Throughout the past four years, she has excelled at Casa Grande by taking rigorous AP honors and JC classes. During Ruby's academic career, some of her favorite classes have been AP Human Geography and English 5 at the JC. Her passion for learning drives her to attend a four-year college/university in the near future after high school, where she plans to major in either international business or political science. Outside of school, Ruby has dedicated her free time to club and high school soccer, which she has done for the last 12 years of her life and hopes to, and hopes to continue in college. For the past two falls, she, her love for soccer has also fueled Ruby to coach younger girls' teams in hopes of inspiring more people to participate and enjoy the sport. Additionally, Ruby has always been passionate about fighting for individual rights, a passion that has led her to join the Sonoma County Commission of Human Rights and become the Chair of Sonoma County Commission of the Status of Women. In her free time, Ruby loves to read, bake, and spend time with loved ones. Congratulations, Ruby.
Congratulations, Ruby. Do we have Ruby's friends and family in the audience too? Can we go wave or stay on the air? Awesome, thank you Gauchos. Next up, we'll stay on that side of town and go with Kennelworth.
Hello, I'm Josie Holly and I'm proud to introduce Kennelworth Junior High School Student of the Month of January 2024, Noah Hawley. Noah has been selected as Student of the Month because he is an exceptional student academically who demonstrates integrity, a strong work ethic, and respect to everyone he encounters. Noah is an engaged campus community member having participated in Kennelworth Band and Wrestling Program for both 7th and 8th grade. Noah's band teacher, Mr. Clemente, recognizes him as one of the top players in the band and as someone who acts as a leader and can be relied upon to help others. Recently, Noah participated in the Junior High Sonoma County Honor Band, which is a group made up of the best players in Sonoma County. Noah has impressively maintained a 4.0 GPA throughout his junior high career while balancing his music and athletic responsibilities. Noah's teachers had many compliments to offer this fantastic young man. Mr. Raya from history class says Noah's teachers have been calling him a triple threat. In his, he is an ace in the classroom, he is indispensable in band, and he is a killer in athletics. His club wrestling coaches called him a man among boys. In my class, in my class, he focuses and turns out excellent work. He is a helper, a friend, and academic. He is always smiling and never seems down. Love this kid. Noah is an avid baseball player and he plays with Petaluma Valley since he was in kindergarten. One of Noah's proudest accomplishments has been being drafted on NorCal Oaks for the past two years. Playing on Sonoma team, Noah has the amazing opportunity to play baseball against some of the best players from all over the country, resulting in his team making it 13th out of 84 teams. For fun, Noah enjoys spending time with his family and friends, going crabbing in Bodega Bay and mountain biking in our beautiful Sonoma County. Noah plans to attend Casa Grande High School where he will participate in the Gaucha Band, continue with wrestling and baseball. After graduating high school, he sees himself attending college and getting a good job. Kennelworth is incredibly proud of Noah and can't wait to see many more of his successes. Congratulations, Noah.
Congratulations. Do we have Noah's friends and family in the audience?
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Kalani Penya. Kalani has been chosen as Student of the Month by her teachers because she is positive, kind, and excels academically. Kalani has impressively maintained a 4.0 GPA throughout junior high with a rigorous class schedule including leadership, Math 1, and Advanced English. Kalani is admired by her peers and teachers and her constant smile brightens everyone's day. Kalani's teachers had wonderful things to say about her. Ms. Martin, Kalani's PE teacher, says Kalani is a wonderful student and all-round person. She not only participates fully and with energy, she is always willing to help other students achieve their best. Kalani is outgoing, friendly, and a very spirited girl. She has pride in herself, academics, and school. Mr. Quintua, Kalani's history teacher, showed Kalani has got to be the smileiest person in class. I can say the lamest joke and she will still smile as if it was the funniest thing ever said. She brings an infectious positive attitude to class that usually spreads to those sitting around her. Her work reflects the time and effort she puts into it and nobody lip syncs Last Christmas by Wham! better than her. She is most deserving of this award.
When Kalani is not at school, you can likely find her at Studio C Dance Academy. Kalani has been a dancer at Studio C for 12 years, participating in jazz, hip-hop, ballet, tap, and lyrical classes and teams. Kalani is particularly proud of the improvement she has seen herself as a dancer in the last couple of years, proving that all of her hard work has paid off. Over the summer, Kalani volunteers at Adventure Recreation teaching gymnastics. Over the summer, Kalani volunteers at Adventure Recreation teaching gymnastics to our community youth. Kalani's other hobbies include reading, hanging out with her younger sister and watching her favorite TV shows. Kalani plans to attend Casa Grande High School and has a goal of taking four years of Spanish to receive a seal of bilingual literacy upon graduation. Kalani also hopes to continue into ASB at Casa to continue to serve her school community. After high school, Kalani plans to attend a prestigious college and participate on the college dance team. Kennelworth is incredibly proud of Kalani and we look forward to watching you reach all of your dreams. Congratulations, Kalani.
Awesome. Congratulations, Kalani. Do we have Kalani's friends and family in the audience? Congratulations. And last but certainly not least, Petaluma Junior High.
Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Callum Ames. Mr. D says that Callum is consistently a positive, respectful and hardworking student. He regularly brings a good attitude to class and he was on our second grade cross-country and track team last year. Mr. Lemansky is impressed with Callum's willingness to take risks in class and his ability to advocate for himself. Mr. Lang appreciates that Callum is contentious and pays close attention to detail. He shared that Callum is a great role model in class. Callum said that the things he enjoys most about PJHS is that there are many great teachers that teach him valuable information for the rest of my school career. Outside of school, Callum enjoys playing basketball, going to the gym and running. Next year, Callum is looking forward to reuniting with some of his older friends who are already at Petaluma High. After graduating from high school, Callum plans to attend college and pursue a career in real estate development. Callum's family is incredibly proud of his accomplishments at PJHS. Callum's mom, Sandra, said, "We are excited for Callum. We are so proud of the student in person Callum has become. His diligence and engagement in school, as well as his considerate nature, has really allowed him to shine. We can't wait to see what he does with the future." Congratulations, Callum.
Congratulations. Do we have Callum's friends and family here?
Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Chelsea Reed. Chelsea was chosen as Student of the Month because she is kind, hardworking and always shows up with a positive attitude. Ms. O said that Chelsea is an amazing artist who is always smiling and gets along well with others. Mr. D appreciated Chelsea's diligence and willingness to try new things. Ms. Byer is impressed with Chelsea's awesomeness, sense of humor, class participation and willingness to ask questions. Ms. Peterson loves having Chelsea in class and always looks forward to seeing her amazing smile. When asked about her favorite thing about PJHS, Chelsea had this to say. "The things I enjoy most about PJHS are seeing my friends and the staff. Everyone is so sweet and they always make our time enjoyable while we're at school." Outside of school, Chelsea enjoys volunteering at Penn Grove Elementary, hanging out with friends and riding her dirt bike. Chelsea has been learning American Sign Language for the past three years. After high school, Chelsea hopes to pursue a career working with children and she hopes to be able to put her ASL to good use. Chelsea's family is incredibly proud of her accomplishments. Her mom Christine had this to say. "Jared and I are very proud of Chelsea. She's such a loving and caring person. We've always gotten the nicest feedback from her teachers. She's a hard worker at school and at home. She's also a fantastic role model to her younger sister, Tinley. Not only is she caring and loving, but she's also very funny. Chelsea can make the best out of any situation, always seeing the best in things." Congratulations, Chelsea.
Congratulations. Do we have Chelsea's family and friends here? Congratulations to all our Students of the Month. Thank you to the family and friends who make it possible for them to do all of those things. I'm tired just hearing how much you guys do. It's awesome. And so next up, we have a community schools update and then we'll take a short two-minute break. But I want the community to hear about community schools, so I'm not breaking yet.
Okay, good evening. Well, we're happy to be here tonight to provide a little update on where we are with community schools and the California Community Schools Implementation Grant. So where we're at right now is we are getting ready to submit the grant application for Cohort Three. It's due on February ninth and McDowell Elementary will be applying for the implementation grant. There's been a strength and needs assessment. Molly, our community schools coordinator, has been conducting and engaged with the McDowell community and looking at a developmental rubric and looking at our capacity building strategies, both as a school district and engaging a school district committee as well as the McDowell Committee. And that's been all been a part of our implementation plan.
Really quick, just because we have so many folks in the audience, can you say what a community school is?
I'll let.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So a community school is, it's a place, it's a hub where the school partners with the families and the community partners so that it's a whole child design and so it addresses the academics, you know, strong readers, academics, mental health, physical health, you know, and then partnering with all kinds of agencies, even for behavioral health, the health clinic, things like that, so that families can go to a place and get kind of all the students' needs met and the families' needs.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. So all of the items are under review. We've been working with Tony Bill, who's a consultant through SCO, who's been helping the majority of the school districts in Sonoma County who are submitting a grant application. And we have been in collaboration with our advisory council as well as the consist of site and district administrators, parents, students and community members as we're gathering this and developing this community school strategy for McDowell in particular.
So McDowell and the school district have both a site advisory council and an LEA district advisory council. And so we've kind of just determined what the overall priorities are for McDowell. And when we met at the site, we started having to narrow down, you know, what they felt the greatest needs were. And what they have come up with is a full-time bilingual or multilingual district guidance coordinator who's a licensed MFT, who will serve as the counselor, wellness coordinator and liaison between the site and the district. A fully robust wellness center, instructional assistance or behavioral assistance to support all the students. They won't be assigned necessarily to one class, but for everybody there. And then after-school support with the Homer Club or tutoring, and that's in collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club. And then when the students were asked what they wanted, a swing set was very important, so we added that to the list as well.
So we will be submitting this, as we said, February ninth and then we should know by June or July if we have been awarded the grant for McDowell.
And before I move on, I think it's important to note the reason, you know, so this grant, there were specific demographic basis for applying for the grant and McDowell was our only elementary school that qualified, which is why we're applying for this significant grant.
And McDowell will also serve as a pilot in case, you know, because we're still going to work with community partners and it's not going to stop our community partners to serve other schools within our district.
Absolutely. Any questions about community schools? Go for it.
Thank you for this update. I would imagine that another reason for McDowell being an ideal site is the co-location with the FRC and the adult school, but I didn't see that kind of enveloped in this grant. I mean, is it a part of the community school concept at that site and how is that being rolled in?
Okay, yeah. So the Family Resource Center is part of the adult school and that's what actually makes McDowell practically a community school, yeah, already. So that is not going to change. It will enhance what's already happening and then when we further our community partnerships, that will enhance the resource center and the school. So that is a huge part of what's already happening in McDowell. There's a lot of success in supporting families. There's a lot of things that are already in existence and that won't change, so that will definitely be a huge part of the community school strategy there. It's just like, it's almost like instead of starting from scratch, we're kind of three-quarters there. Yeah.
Just along those lines, is it a separate building? Is it going to be part of that building with the Family Education Center or, yeah?
Depending on the partnerships.
And adult education. I mean, is it going to be in that space or is it supposed to be on its own? Just.
Yeah, everything will be integrated, so I don't know. I'm imagining that the Family Resource Center will continue to stay. They've identified a room in McDowell. I think it's, I don't want to, well, I think it's in the A Wing. And that will be the Wellness Center. And so the Wellness Center will be a space for students to be able to go for counseling, to kind of take a sensory break and things like that. So there's going to be a lot, the Wellness Center is going to be a huge part of it. But the guidance council that will be hired, do the grant money, will be doing a lot of collaboration with partners and the district.
Any other questions from anybody? Thanks for the update. Thank you. All right, we'll recess for a two-minute break. All right, Dave, are you ready for me? Okay, so gaveling us back into session at six forty-eight PM. There's three minutes, not, I'm kidding, I don't, we'll be fine. So we're on item eight, which is comments from the public on non-adjourned items. I have one public comment up here. If you want to give a public comment on something not on the agenda, please bring the red card up to our wonderful Bree over here and she will get it to me. While I wait for that, I'm going to read the board language for a public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services and/or employees, the district does have a board policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-adjourned items, period. That is right now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. If you don't know which item you're talking about, that's okay. Just write it in the little info and we will figure it out. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or twenty-minute limit per subject matter." So with all of that, Taryn, can you come up and share your public comment with us?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah. Hi, good evening. My name is Taryn Obaid. I'm here tonight to speak about something later on the agenda, but since I'm here, I wanted to mention something. I'm a Petaluma resident. I'm a retired analyst. I've worked for insurance companies. I'm a technical analyst. And I currently sit on the tree committee for the city of Petaluma. We are working on the carbon blueprint right now and we're getting deep into what it means to be carbon neutral. And one of the things that we've been learning recently, because we've got a great committee with some really smart scientists on sitting, the best carbon sequestration is through trees, which you probably all know and you're doing great work with relief, right? But also soil, just any vacant lot, any lawn. And soil health, what's underneath the soil that we don't see, the waterways, the microorganisms, the little insects, we don't see it, but that is so key to getting air pollution out of the air. Okay, so why do I bring this up for you? Well, we're also looking at the city as wanting to do artificial turf for sports fields. Yeah, we've been doing that for a while, but the governor last year just said, "Okay, California, this is insane. You can start banning this stuff." Artificial turf, yeah, it has crumb rubber infill, which is a carcinogen for our poor children when they fall, take tumbles when they're playing sports. They inhale it, they ingest it, it gets inside their anuses and their vaginas. It is bad news. But as bad as that is, because you can swap it out now for something that's quote-unquote "natural", still problematic, but natural. The blades, the grass blades are made with plastic that's forever chemicals. And I'm sure you all know that the young people, cancer rate has shot up eighty percent in the twenty years before the millennia and the twenty years after. It has skyrocketed and everybody is supposing it's for environmental reasons. We really need to dig deep into what it's going to take to not lay down artificial turf because not only is the artificial, the forever chemical a hazard to children, it's carcinogen, endocrine system suppressor, et cetera, but it kills the soil. There's no carbon sequestration for whatever that square area, that area coverage is. And so please start thinking about the next field. Don't just put down plastic again. Please do everything you can to start thinking about where the money's going to come from, where the appropriate staffing is going to come from, the subject matter expertise, because we've done grass forever, right? Let's get back to grass. Let's keep our kids healthy and safe as they play, which is so important and these kids are so impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Taryn. All right. Now, I don't know why I'm closing that. I'm going to need that later. Moving on to item nine on our agenda, which is adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. I don't know why I picked up the gavel, fam. I'm on it today. We're going to report on activities and correspondence by school board members. And we have been busy, even though not everyone reported what they did, so we probably did more than this. No, that's okay. It's okay. It's okay. Board trustees attended our LCAP committee, our arts meeting, the SNAK snack meeting about food served at our schools, a districting committee meeting, adult ed graduation, a meeting about career technical education, budget meeting, the Casa Grande basketball games, a tour of Jefferson Union High School District's housing, staff housing, accelerated ed pathway planning meeting, agenda review and check-ins with the superintendent. Maddie, do you want to add anything to that? Maddie did other things too. I know, I'll let you, but I'm going to say the student board member part first. Student board members attended the BIPOC Club, the Los CM Youth Perspective Design Meeting, Petaluma Blacks for Community Development, Community Service and the Casa Petaluma Basketball Game, which the word on the street is Casa One. So now, if anyone wants to say anything about any of their activities, Ellen, you can start.
I went to the snack meeting and basically we're talking about food for our students. What was missing from that meeting were students. So I'm just putting it out there, if anybody's watching. We would love to see, the next meeting is February fifteenth. I believe it's in the Petaluma High School Library where it was last time. If you can't make it, send me an email or Brian DeFor an email and just some of your suggestions, some of your. And just some of your suggestions, some of your issues, what you would like to see, what you would like to see disappear from our cafeterias. It's really important to hear from students.
I just had one more thing that I apologize that I did not get my email in. That I went to the A U W forum on Sunday on normalizing gun safety and our own Mia Vaughn was there. She was our student board member representative last year. And she actually brought to us the gun storage resolution and notifying parents about the fact that they now in Petaluma have to secure any kinds of guns that they have and ammunition in their homes. And so it's, it's just, it was wonderful to see her. She did a wonderful job. She says hi. And, and it was a great forum. I think it was, I don't think it was taped, but anyway, just wanted to mention that.
And just to add on to the safe storage, it's now California law. Unfortunately, I don't think it has a whole lot of teeth in it as far as finding out if people really have safely stored, but it is a California law.
Just a quick note, I attended a webinar panel put on by Ed Source on the topic of superintendent retention. And they were highlighting how in the last five years, really superintendent turnover has just skyrocketed as a result of both COVID and the politicization of school boards and schooling in general. And they talked about a lot of solutions, but the one thing that I want to raise here is they, they said a lot, you know, if you, if the casual observer comes to a school board meeting, typically the conversations are centered around things that are not going well and because we're trying to solve those problems. But it gives the false impression that things aren't going well in the district. And so they really emphasize for us as board members to every, to publicly acknowledge the good things going on and the good people that we have. And so I want to take this advantage of this moment, just to say how much I appreciate our superintendent and the team he's built here in the district office that I think is just a fabulous, wonderful team and the site teams that have come with that. I really am grateful for the wonderful work that you all do. And I feel like this district is, you know, pointed in the right direction. We have good relationships with our labor and we have students succeeding, as we just saw. I think we're all focused on student success and that if that's a, it's a good feeling to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheldon, for saying that. I think we all feel that way.
Any, oh yeah, please, yeah.
Yeah. I wanted to talk about the meeting I went to on this Saturday. So I was just invited to join this group called Los Cien and it's a youth design perspective team. And it's basically this group of students from all over Sonoma County that are just wanting to speak upon issues. And we're working on doing a panel at Windsor High School in March. So if you guys are at all interested in going and listening to these students all over Sonoma County talk about these issues, feel free, I can send an invitation. Yeah, I think the expected day is March 28th, but that's not confirmed yet, but just wanted to let you guys know.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That would be great. All right, we're going to move on to comments from the public on consent agenda items. I don't have any here that appear to be on the consent agenda. If anyone has any last public comments on the consent agenda, now is your time to bring them up. Otherwise, we will go on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about anything on the consent agenda, anything under 12?
I just have a couple of, I guess, clarifications or comments, I guess, on the SARC, the School Accountability Report Card. I noticed that Petaluma Junior only has one counselor for 451 students. And I know that that's, you know, that's calculated, but I was just wondering, it just seems like a lot. So I'd just like to throw it out there as a discussion maybe around any kind of way that we can reduce that load. I was just thinking about our low college and career readiness rankings. And it seems like junior high is a really pivotal time when students start to think about, especially eighth grade, maybe it would just be a counselor for eighth grade. I don't know. I'm just commenting on this, but you know, for us to start thinking about how we can help that, because it's, it's overwhelming, I would imagine. And I don't think that piece is going to be in there because they're just, you know, getting them through junior high. And it's a two year kind of odd time. And so it would just be really nice to see how we can maybe creatively address this, even though I know that we don't have any money for it.
And I think just, yeah, and it's a comment, we can, we can continue the conversation. When we think about Kenilworth, the student numbers at Kenilworth are about 800, about 800 students with two counselors. So it's, it tracks similarly to, to Kenilworth. The difference being Petaluma Junior is a little bit higher caseload and they have two administrators for that, about a little bit more than half the size of the school. So yeah, we can, I mean, we can certainly talk about how we increase. And I think your point is we want to see more counseling everywhere, not just Petaluma Junior. Yeah, yeah.
And the only other thing that I meant, that I was, I kind of had a question about, and it's part of the form, I guess, is that under the secondary support, there were the librarians, there was zero. And I know that we have librarians at all of our secondary schools. So I was just wondering, are they in a different, their student, it was part of student support, a student support services staff?
Yeah. And I.
And it was in all of them. So I was just wondering, is that just an anomaly of the?
I'll let Tony speak to that, but I think we talked, you know, one of the things we're very proud of in this district, and this comes from our parcel tax, was there are six, my, my, my understanding is there are six teacher librarians in all of Sonoma County and four of them are in penalty schools. So I don't know, I don't know as far as how they apply to the, to the SARC. Maybe Tony, do you want to speak to that?
So some of the SARC are updated through DTS, which is our, our service provider for inputting certain information. And some of it is by the, the teacher. So we'll have to go back and look to see if it was uploaded accurately to reflect all of our staff that we should have. But so, and sometimes some of the data is delayed. And so DTS will upload them at a later date when the CDE provides certain data points. So, and some of those are also reflective of personnel as well as some budget data as well.
Any other questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I want to continue on the SARC reports. Just one question of clarification and then I, some general questions. I noticed that the, on these reports, sometimes within the same school, they have percent passing the, the standards by ethnicity in some categories and then not in others. The example that I can point you to is in Petaluma High School, they break out Asian group in science, because there were 11 at the school crossing over the threshold of 10 to be reported. But Asian doesn't show up as a category for the English, English language arts or math. So I just, I need to understand how within the same site, there could be some differentiation by group in some tests, but not in others.
It could be the science, if it's regards to science, as it could be because they take the science, I believe in 10th grade. And then in the 11th grade, they take the CAS typically. But again, with the, this data, that's all uploaded from whatever the state had provided. So it's not something that the school sites really input in. It's just what typically is provided by the state.
Does it suggest to you that fewer than 10 took the ELA in math tests then, if it's not broken out?
It could be, it could be, you know, in 11th grade, you know, students, there may be less students or students.
Right, in the different, specific grade.
Correct. So, but it's something that we can look into and see if it's the.
I was just curious, you know, for the, I mean, yeah, I was just curious. The, the main thing I want to raise, you know, Joanna's not here, so I'm going to channel my inner Joanna here. You know, the, we, we see gaps, of course, by ethnic groups as we, as has been the history of this country. And, you know, I think what Joanna would say is we can't be comfortable with this. And I don't think we as individuals here are, but it really gets to what we're going to be doing about it. And the only way anyone could be comfortable with these gaps is if you fundamentally have a belief that children of different groups have different capacities for learning. And that's not something we're going to entertain here. And so it really does speak to these gaps being a reflection, in my opinion, of how we as the adults are distributing, are delivering our education. And I say this with a great humility and shame, quite frankly, as a, as a 20 year educator myself, I, I have taken the time to look at gaps within my own classrooms in my career. And I remember at my 10 year mark, I looked at all of my students' performance across my first 10 years, and I found gaps in my own students. And that was a very humbling and disturbing and it made me reflect and it made me change the way that I teach. So, so I raise that, I raise this by, by asking the community and the teachers to, and us, to dig deep into your school sites, SARC reports and reflect on what this means for the adult behaviors on our campuses.
Well said. Any other questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda?
This is kind of nitpicky, but I found a typo in one of the field trip requests. The band is going to New York, but then they talked about landing in New Orleans. So you might want to fix that.
Or at least make sure we know where the kids, where they are. As long as we know where they are, I think it would be good. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting or approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. And now we will hear comments from the public on action items. I have one card for action items. If anyone would like to speak on any of the action items, which are under number 14, please bring up a card in the next few minutes. But first we can hear from Jessica.
When you come to the front, you get to see what was left behind by.
Yeah, it was a party.
I saw them from outside with their, their festive gear. So, good evening. My name is Jessica Empress. I'm on the, the Board of Live Oak Charter. Many of you already know me. You visit at our campus, you've come to see festivals, you've had lunch with me, you've been on Zoom meetings with me, but it's really fun to actually be in the room. Usually I watch your meetings on YouTube and it's nice to have a compelling reason to actually rearrange the schedule and get in the room with you. So thank you for having one of our items tonight. I'm here tonight to comment on the Proposition 39 resolution. Before I get to that, there are a few things to say about the, the context of this request. And there's actually a lot that I could say, but I only have four minutes, so I'll try, I'll try to keep it short. You may be aware that Live Oak has been at our current location at the fairgrounds for over 20 years. We are primarily in modular buildings that, and I quote from the city's engineering report, are at the end of their usable lifespan. Knowing that that day was coming, we have, when the duct tape would not be enough to hold it together, we have been working really hard on finding a permanent home for many, many years. There's a lot of history around our facilities and our relationship with PCS, but that's for another time. One thing I do want to say is that, you know, in, no matter how bad things have been at Live Oak, we have not before now submitted a Prop 39 request. It is a legal right we could have, but we waved it away for something else that we hoped to get that didn't, didn't come to fruition. But now is the moment. I've had several meetings with Matthew, great meetings, trying to understand the various financial moves the district has made in relationship to Live Oak and figure out where we're at and how we can move forward. And now, now is the time to take this step. So when Cali, for the bigger picture, when California approved the formation of charter schools, the idea was that they'd be small scale laboratories of innovation and education. And the hope was that there would be an open exchange of ideas between districts and charters and that they would result in improved practices that reach all of California students. Unfortunately, because of the state's incredibly regressive and punitive funding formula for public education, often what happens is that charters are seen as competition and a threat to district resources, especially independent charter schools like Live Oak. And without sufficient investment by the state in education, a capitalist society rewards the efficiencies that come with sameness and not the energy that sustains diversity. So some of you have heard me on that soapbox before and I will, I will stand off of it about health ecosystems and monocropping of education. And what I, what I do want to say tonight is that I'm happy to be able to share with you that Live Oak may have finally turned a corner in figuring out what to do with our facilities. We are in partnership with the city of Petaluma to try to participate in the plans to build a new community resilience center at the fairgrounds. Ideally, it will include a new campus for our school. And the vision is amazing. The preliminary architectural plans are beautiful and the city is a really profoundly supportive partner. However, it's far from a done deal. There are a lot of variables that are outside of our control that make kill the project, including finding enough funding to build it. The only responsible thing that we can do as a board is to make sure that we're legitimately planning for all scenarios. And in that spirit, we approached Matthew this fall, gave him our update and said, so we've reached the point where both Live Oak and the district need to have a better understanding of what it would look like for PCS to fulfill its legal obligation for our facilities. And the state has given us this clunky process to use, so you know, let's, let's use that to help us figure this out. We kind of shared a laugh and agreed that most likely nobody was going to enjoy it, which is true, it's a straight up bureaucratic pain.
Give about 20 seconds.
Great, okay. So what I'll skip to the end is, and to say that this is supposed to be a trial run for us, but we are disappointed with the resolution put forward tonight. We reviewed it with our lawyers who have deemed it legally insufficient. It doesn't meet the spirit of Prop 39, nor we think the, it's, we think it's out of integrity with both the law and with PCS's stance on equity and inclusion. And it's promised to fulfill education for all students.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thanks.
All right, seeing no other public comments on action items. We will move on to the action items. So our first one is 14.1.1, approval of the work-based learning coordinator position. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the work-based learning coordinator position.
I second.
All right, does someone want to talk about what this is?
I'd love to.
Perfect.
So we have received grants for work-based learning this year and Dr. Osterman has been leading that effort. One of the things that this grant also provided for was we're moving forward with a position for a work-based learning coordinator. It's a classified position. It's a, you know, with a very high level of, of working with students and partners and a lot of responsibility. And so we're really excited about being able to have this additional position to support the work of our, of our work-based learning efforts.
I have a question. So how exactly will students learn about this? Be, are they chosen? Is it something that you're going to go to all the English classes and explain it and let whoever's interested? I mean, how is that, what's the process?
For this, for this position?
For the work-based learning, the, not the position, but how, I guess.
Well, we're only talking about the position right now, so it has to be related to the position.
I think it's related to the position in that, how is that person in that position going to address the needs? To the position in that, how is that person in that position going to address the needs of students?
Yeah, I know. That's a great question. So, um, in the job descrip- so it's a new position. So there's parts of it that, that are, like, we have the big picture, but there's parts of the details that we'll still need to figure out. But the, the intention is, is that this person will work with, on many levels, will be working with, with the work base, with Dan Osterman on all those efforts that will work directly with students. That will be going out and working with, um, with business and, and, uh, industry partners. What that specifically looked like, I think to your question, I, we don't, we haven't determined that part yet. But we know that that's the intention and that's what's in the job description is they'll be working directly on multiple levels. And one of those levels is directly with students to talk to them about their opportunities for work-based learning and, and internships and that sort of thing.
Yeah. I also, I also just want to add my understanding for this position. So first of all, this, it's, it, I know it says, um, work-based learning coordinator position. I just want to be really clear. It's, this is a classified bargaining unit, CSA position. I was a little bit distracted, so I'm, I'm sure I missed that. And, um, that's now been approved by CSA. So there's an agreement on the, you know, placement and the, the job description, et cetera, et cetera. I also think it's important to note here that this is a, a, um, this is a grant-funded position. So we received money from CTE Foundation. They're actually funding this over, I believe, three, they've agreed to three years. Sorry if I missed that. I got distracted. This position, so yeah, as Jason said, when you work directly with students, but also I think it's really part of the, the design is when teachers, CTE pathways, uh, teachers in general want to take, do field trips, but guest speakers, et cetera, et cetera, this position is, the, the, the design is to have this person reaching out to organizations, scheduling the field trip so that takes some of the work off the teacher's plates so that they can, you know, we, we want to take this field trip or get this, this guest speaker, whatever it may be, to kind of help facilitate there. So there, there is some work directly with students and there's also a lot of work with teachers and Dr. Osterman, of course. Yes.
So it was, it is a three-year grant for this position?
It, it, at least a three year. I think Dan was saying that he thought it might be even, uh, reaching out to four. If I, I can get, get more information on that and get back to you, but I think, is that right? Yeah, I think it's four years. Um, and as Matthew mentioned, it's a little miss, it's a little confusing because it says the title is coordinator and that's what's, the position's called in many places, but it's not an administrator, like many of our coordinators are administrators. This is a CSA position, a classified position, non-management, um, position.
Okay. And, uh, this one last thing is, uh, for secondary schools, is there going, is this going to be down to the junior highs too? Or just primarily high?
I think that, I think in the, when we have in the job description, that is part of the hope and the growth. I know obviously the work's going to be starting at, at the, the high schools, but the intention would be to move it, move it on down, uh, i- into, into junior high and conceivably beyond, so.
All right, any other questions? And then, um, I'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we move on to 14.1.2, Resolution 2324-17, declaring the month of January as Board of Education Recognition Month.
So I would love to jump in here. I know, I, I put this on there after Sheldon's kind words. I'm going to return the favor here. So I think, you know, the month of January is recognized as the, as School Board Recognition, School Board Appreciation Month. And so I'm just going to, I'm going to read this into the record. Whereas California has designated January as Board of Education Recognition Month, a time set aside to recognize the contribution of boards of education and school boards to the academic, social, emotional, physical, and mental health needs of students. And whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life for all California citizens and communities, whereas school board trustees advocate for the students in our community to thrive. And whereas local school board districts member, sorry, local school district board members are committed to students and believe that all students can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual. Whereas public schools serve the most, serve to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society in an ever-changing world is more poignant than ever before. And whereas the PCS Board of Education is dedicated to improving access to inclusive, equitable, high-quality education by helping create thriving learning environments for students, now therefore be it resolved that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Boards of Educa- Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to recognize January as Board of Education Recognition Month. And we want to just thank you for everything that you do. You guys are just equity warriors here, um, for us in Petaluma City Schools and we appreciate you. And I know last year we were, I remissed it, that we missed the month of January, so I wanted to make sure that we got it on there. Even on the last day of January, I'm sorry about that again, but, um, we, we appreciate you. Our, our board members, our student board members, you guys are, are, are just from a po- that policy level guiding us, um, as a, as a district and as a community. So thank you so much.
It feels very weird to vote on this.
Yeah, it does, it does, but, um, thank you for this. I think all of us are here because we want to represent our community and bring the community voices to the board, so I also, I can pass it, I can vote for it because I also think it's recognizing community and community input, and the community's voice through the electoral process, even though last time three of us weren't even on the ballot because we were unopposed. So I thought that was weird. But that's not, not our decision. That's the county registrar voters taking it with her. Does anyone else have any less snarky comments to make?
We don't have a motion yet, right?
No.
I move to approve Resolution 2324-17.
I second.
Any last comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the resolution passes and we move on to Resolution 2324-18, declaring the month of February as Black History Month. And neither of my black board members are here, so I can read it into the record. Resolution of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts, declaring the month of February as Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is celebrated every February as a tribute to the achievements of Black Americans who have shaped American history from 1619 to the election of the first Black president and vice president of the United States of America in 2008 and 2020, respectively, and beyond. Whereas Black Americans have played a pivotal role in the history and shaping of America and their contributions should never be understated or marginalized. And whereas Black Americans have been pivotable, pivotal in the creation of a massive number of inventions and are recognized for achievements in education, social services, public safety, health, business, fine arts, entertainment, science, politics, law, engineering, and technology. And whereas Black Americans have continually enriched and contributed to our society through their longstanding commitment to resilience, justice, equality, civil rights, and economic and social equality for all. And whereas Black history is a part of American history and as educational leaders, we have a responsibility to educate students about the role and contribution of Black Americans in history throughout the entire year, including embracing aspects of Black American history that are all too often ignored. And whereas the history social science framework for California Public Schools, kindergarten through grade 12, states that the history curriculum of community, state, region, nation, and world must reflect the experiences of people of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups and must be integrated at every level. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. Now therefore be it resolved that the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to recognize Black History Month, honor the contributions of Black Americans, support the educational attainment of Black students, and support the professional success of Black staff members.
I move to approve.
Resolution 2324-18. Okay, I heard a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this one?
Great.
All right.
I like that it's more expansive.
Yes. Thank you, Bree, for giving us the bones and Joanna and I made some tiny edits and we have a good little resolution. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Always good. All right, moving on to action items under Business Services, Resolution 2324-19 regarding the preliminary facilities proposal of the Live Oak Charter School. Matthew or Amanda, whoever wants to talk about it, go ahead and talk about it.
All right, I will go ahead and take this. I'm going to start with a little history on the Prop 39 request. The provision of facilities to charter schools is governed by Education Code Section 47614 in implementing regulation of Title V of the California Code of Regulations, which everybody refers to as Proposition 39. Proposition 39 requires a school district to make available to an eligible charter school, making a timely request, facilities sufficient for the charter school to accommodate all of its in-district students in conditions reasonably equivalent to those in which the students would be accommodated if they were otherwise attending our district schools. The district reserve, received a request for Proposition 39 facilities for the 2425 school year from Live Oak Charter School by the regulatory deadline. With correspondence dated November 17th, Live Oak submitted revised corrected in-district classroom average daily attendance projections for the 2425, broken down by grade level and district schools where its students would otherwise attend. As part of the Prop 39 process, by correspondence dated December 1st, the district provided Live Oak with written objections to the Live Oak ADA projections for the 2425 school year and provided the ADA projections the district determined to be reasonable. By correspondence dated December 18th, 2023, Live Oak responded to the district's written objections and accepted the district's counter-projection of 123.3 in-district classroom ADA for 2425 for, with an enrollment of 130 students TK through eighth grade. The district is obligated to provide Live Oak with a preliminary facilities per- proposal pursuant to Proposition 39, no later than February 1st. If the in-district's preliminary proposal cannot accommodate all of Live Oak's projected in-district ADA at a single school district school site, Proposition 39 regulations require the district's governing board to first make a finding that Live Oak's in-district ADA cannot be accommodated at a single school doc site and adopt written statement of reasons explaining in the finding. So that is what we are bringing forward tonight, um, with Resolution 2324-19. Working with, um, superintendent facilities and our legal team, we have determined that we cannot accommodate Live Oak's in-district ADA at one school site and will need to offer two school sites for the Prop 39 request.
So basically you're saying that they've got to take their school and go to different places? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, for, for the in, so they have in-district and out-of-district students. So the request is for their in-district students. So yes, we need to offer them two sites, likely one of our secondary and one of our elementary schools. And then they will need to find a third location for their out-of-district students.
Can the out-of-district students attend, go to the either of these two sites?
We do not have space.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, so to accommodate the 123.3 in-district classroom ADA, we're looking at seven, seven classrooms. So the, the issue, so to put it into context, the issue is that we look around at our, our schools, there's no school that has seven open classrooms. We don't have a, uh, I mean, typically in this kind of thing, if we had a, a closed campus or something that we chuttered, that would be great. We don't have, we do not have it. We can't create space. There are seven classroom, they need seven classrooms. And when we look around at our various campuses, we don't have seven vacant, oh, empty classrooms. Or even shuffling, moving, you know, moving pieces around, whereas we, you know, we feel like we could accommodate on two campuses.
So this resolution isn't us doing anything or deciding anything about Live Oak moving on to any of our campuses. This is us doing the legal thing to legally say we don't have room on one campus on its own. For the in-district specifically, much less in and out.
Yeah, so, um, if the board approves this resolution tonight, um, on March 1st, is our, sorry, we will, we need to make the preliminary offer to Live Oak by February 1st, where we do name, um, which school sites. And then they must respond to us by March 1st. And then April 1st is, um, when we have to make our final offer for facilities.
I'm just having a really hard time wrapping my head around the idea that you've got the school where all the kids are together and then we're gonna splash them all over our district. It just doesn't.
I mean, that's the whole issue with the way that the state treats charter schools and public schools is we didn't have space for them when they started. We didn't have a campus for them. And now if we were to incorporate them, we didn't ever fund building a K, TK through eight, K through eight school. Like we, and we don't have half a campus just sitting vacant waiting for a school. I mean, I wish we did, but I don't, I don't see another way through unless, unless someone's hiding classrooms.
So what's the, um, what's the step after our declaration of impaction?
We then make a preliminary offer by February 1st.
And then they can decide to take it or leave it.
And then they have to respond to our preliminary offer by March 1st. So if you do not pass this resolution tonight, we will legally have to offer them in-district space all at one school, meaning we would have to relocate, potentially relocate our students.
Right.
Our current students.
And the, um, so the, the head count, I think I read is 137. But that's seven classrooms because of how it's spread across the grades, I presume.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we had to do is we had to calculate, um, for our, our district and our school sites. So we used our current district, um, student to staff ratio, which gives them seven classrooms. Um, we originally thought that it would be closer to five, but once we did all the calculations, it's seven.
And, and just, I know it's not under our purview, but just for, for fuller understanding, the other did, home districts that the rest of Live Oak students belong to would have to seek the, the, that space in their own respective districts.
No, um, the Live Oak is chartered under us, so they would just need to find a third location for all of the other.
That could be privately owned building or fairgrounds, city, whatever.
Yes.
But it would have to be in the service area of our district? Or no, it could be anywhere in the county in the world, like.
I, I'm not, I do know it can, could be in another.
Okay.
Town. I'm not sure how far out.
So if we did not pass, if we did not pass the resolution, I'm just trying to think this through, then we would need to, um, have those 123 ADA in one site. Possibly moving, um, students that are already there. But then they would all, they would still have to find a second site for the rest of their students.
Correct.
So then is there, um, have you had a breakdown about which ones are, uh, which students for, you know, our, that live in PCS are, um, secondary and which ones are elementary? Do you have any breakdown for that?
One second. And that is another thing to point out, um, one of the decisions that made it difficult is we do not, as you said, operate any TK eight schools. So this is a TK eight school, which makes letting.
Well, we have Cherry Valley, but Cherry Valley doesn't have.
Non-charter. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sorry. And the charters, they can't, they, they do not qualify, Pen Grove or Cherry Valley.
Okay.
Sorry.
So the charters don't have to help the other charters? Okay.
Sorry about that.
Interesting.
Okay, let me pull.
Learning something new about, yeah, no, I'd get, I got that. I just, yeah.
Let's see.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a. Yeah, no, it's it's a pickle, it's a weird. Situation, I don't think, I'm I'm not going to speak for Live Oak, but I think if I were in their situation, I wouldn't want to be on two school campuses anyway, much less. Three, it sounds like from Jessica's public comment that they're not. Trying, it's. Everyone's just following the legal things to explore the process is my. Understanding and you know, I think it's worth it for them to give us the Prop Thirty Nine and see if we do have classrooms for. Half their student and what we're finding is we we don't, at least not on one campus, which should not surprise any of us that have visited the school sites, like we know that there aren't. Half of a. Campus vacant.
Um, so the the seventh and eighth grade projected enrollment for next year is thirty students.
Yeah, in district.
In district, yeah, of the one thirty-seven. So it is, so some of the numbers are enrollment and some are ADA, so that's why. And their ADA is close to night closer to ninety eighty-nine or ninety percent. It'd be one oh seven. Oh. Okay, um, I'll just read them off real quick, TKK is twenty-five. First grade twelve, second grade eleven, third grade fifteen, fourth grade fourteen. Fifth grade. Sorry, sixth grade eleven and then seventh grade. Sixteen. And eighth grade fifteen. So thirty-one, sorry.
And I'm uh have we looked into what those two sites would be if we pass this?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm I I can, I mean, are we free to say or um I can guess, I can certainly guess. Okay, that's fine. Um, so we heard in public comment that Live Oak's attorney doesn't think that our resolution. I I get a clear understanding of what the what the deficiency was, but. Um, we have cleared our resolution with our attorneys?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I the response from legal was we believe that this satisfies satisfies the requirement.
Good.
Um, I will be voting in favor of this resolution, it just seems like what we have to do, given the circumstances, but I would urge. Cabinet to make an offer of sites that is. As close to cohesive as possible, it's not an ideal situation, it sounds like. This isn't Live Oak's first choice anyway, hopefully the city thing comes through and they get a beautiful thing. On the fairgrounds, it's a beautiful community hub. Um, but I would urge us to try to keep them as close together as we can. And you know, if we have to go out for a bond in the future, it's worth discussing. I mean, I don't know if we can raise enough money to build a whole school, but like. You know, this is depth, Live Oak will definitely have to be a part of the conversations when we're talking about going out for bond money. In the future, um. And whether they share a school site with a. A TK through six or. They more formally split. But then they still, we still need to take into account. As educators and as people like the the out of district. Folks, like even in the best case scenario, under this Prop Thirty Nine stuff, they would have two different. School sites, even in the their best case scenario with coming to us, um. So it's not. Yeah, I'm just rambling at this point, but I will be voting in favor of the resolution.
So this is about half. This is about half of the. Total Live Oak. Uh, population.
Yes.
Guess about about approximately half or in district approximately half of our out of Pedemacy Schools District.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash nineteen.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, now we'll move on to. Sorry, I lost myself, um. Student Services fourteen point one point one, a data sharing agreement between the Bike Coalition Safe Routes to Schools Program and. Us, Esmeralda, tell us a little bit about.
Yeah, so this is just support our partnership with Safe Routes to School and their creation of these GIS maps. Um, so that we can create walkability plans and figuring out what the safest routes are to our schools and so it's just a data sharing agreement. Um, they don't keep any of the person, the identifiable information, it's just the addresses and they dispose of them after they're done and so this is a menu. Option for our sites that are um in collaboration with Safe Routes to School and so it's just formalizing these these parts to our our partnership with them.
Is this, is this something that we're renewing or is this a new agreement?
It's a new agreement, usually it would be done with the site, but we'd like to do it district level since all of our schools are engaging in this work.
I just have to say that it was pretty cool to see get that information when I was did that walking tour of um McKinley, because it. It just, it really, because we saw a lot of cars, really a lot of cars. And so it really impacts those the safety of of everything and so I really um. I think it's great that this information is here, I think it also will give us some data on the impact of open enrollment. On on all of our schools, but in particular, you know, those safe routes.
Any other comments or questions?
We've had that, we've had agreements like this site by site, but this is really just bringing it all together and provide great maps and yeah.
Great, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the data sharing.
Agreement.
Agreement. A second.
All those in favor say aye, aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, now we're moving on to comments from the public on discussion and information items. If you're here to publicly comment about the classified list of positions or the cell towers. Or board policy um about sexual harassment, now is your time to bring a red. Piece of paper up to Bree, um I have five up here, so seeing that no more are coming up. I have five, I think, so they each get four, everybody gets four minutes. Um, and so Landry, I'll call you up first and after Landry, we'll have Piper. Yeah, yes, that one, that Landry. You're good.
Okay, um. So I just want to thank you for all the hard work you do for on behalf of kids, um I have a kid at McKinley and thank you. Um, I have a master's in in teaching from USF, I taught public school for years and years and your job is really hard and I'm not trying to make it harder. I promise, um but I'd be remiss if I didn't say that um I learned about the hazards of wireless radiation exposure to children. Um, as a funder of um, I was funding pesticide work through Environmental Working Group and I was talking to one of their scientists there. Ogan and Dinko and she said that she was more concerned about children's exposure to wireless radiation than all of the chemicals that they're working on at EWG. She was one of their top scientists, um that gave me pause, my kid had just been given an an um iPad in kindergarten. And um I read the fine print and I worked with some families and we created a safe tech. Um, sheet in tandem with the district, it had your logo on it, was supposed to go out to teachers. Um, suggesting that things be put on airplane mode um as much as possible, they're not put on the students' laps, there are basic things. It never really happened and a bunch of parents left. Um, so why I'm here is because I'm really concerned about kids' exposure to cellphone to big towers on high school campuses. And um, I just want to read you a couple quotes, um this one comes from Hugh Taylor. Um, Hugh Taylor is the um a doctor, he's PhD, Chief of Obstetrics and Gynecology at Yale University Medical School, we sit. We sit on a board together, um I know him, he says, as a research scientist and physician who studies how microwave radiation affects. The outcomes of pregnancy, I am deeply concerned about growing exposures to cellphone. And other wireless radiation, we also have to think about pregnant teachers, there's there's a lot to think about. Um, wanted to read you this one, this one comes Christopher Perdier, PhD, former director of the United States National Center for Environmental Health. At the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and former director of the US Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. He says, given the human, animal and experimental evidence, I assert that to a reasonable degree of scientific certainty. The probability that RF radiation exposure causes gliomas and um. Neuromas, these brain cancers is high. Uh, here's another one, David Carpenter, um MD, Director of Institute of Health in the Environment University at Albany. The exposure levels of the Federal Communications Commission are totally outdated and do not protect the health of the public, especially children. I urge you to take strong and active steps to reduce exposure of children and staff to excessive levels of radio frequency EMFs within your schools. So I could go on, I have a million of these quotes, um the main thing is that um I urge you to. Ban any new towers from the schools and I urge you, if there's any possible way to get out of this one before twenty twenty-seven or whenever you can. Take it, um there are liability issues too, there is no insurance for RF radiation, Lloyds of London was the last insurer, they they pulled out. Um, teachers could sue it, it's students cancer cluster, there are issues that you guys need to look into having this mega tower. Casa, I hate to bring it up, it wouldn't fly at Petaluma High, absolutely not, those residents fought a tower in the Creamery and won. Um, and it's not fair for our children, I just want to say, I know that you'll lose some money if the tower goes down and um. I do have a foundation hat and we are offering some safe tech grants to schools to do things that are actually free and will save you energy because. Lot of this, lot of energy draining stuff that goes on when you have, you can reduce wifi, there's a lot of things you can do. Um, and we could probably find a grant to help you make up some of those lost funds, okay, so um thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Landry, all right, Piper, you can come on up. And we got one last public comment, I'm just gonna let everybody go to four minutes if they really want to still.
Okay. I don't really want to. Um, hi, my name is Piper Primrose and I am the California Safe Tech in Schools Coordinator for Environmental Health Trust. Which is a national nonprofit uh with that carries out cutting edge research on environmental health hazards and also works directly with communities. To understand and mitigate these hazards, I'm also a longtime elementary school teacher, I'm actually a Waldorf teacher. And so I feel for you charter school about this, really hard to separate a a group of Waldorf kids. Um, I deeply care about children and I really care about. The ever increasing amount of technology and radiation that they are being exposed to. Extensive published scientific evidence indicates that radio frequency radiation at levels that are compliant with. Um FCC limits can cause cancer, increased oxidative stress, genetic damage. Structural and functional changes of the reproductive system, memory deficits, behavioral problems and neurological impacts. We consider, Environmental Health Trust considers radio frequency radiation, RFR. To be a human carcinogen based on the current body of evidence. Many of these effects could be irreversible with grave consequences for our children's future. The American Academy of Pediatrics states that children are more vulnerable to wireless rea- radiation than adults are. Children receive proportionately higher exposures into their more sensitive brain tissue and organs. And children today are being exposed to le- levels of unnatural RFR never before present on earth. At levels far greater than their parents, far greater than any of us grew up with and it's continuing to to increase yearly. We recommend policies to reduce human exposure to RF radiation, especially in schools. And there are many schools that are now taking measures to reduce cell tower radiation from nearby cell towers. Meaning they're they're taking a measures to mitigate the effects of cell towers that are already located near school campuses. But more importantly, I would say for and considering the opportunity you may have before you to cancel this lease. Um, there are many school boards across California and the country currently. Working on resolutions or have passed resolutions banning cell towers on campuses. And opposing them um within fifteen hundred feet of campuses. And I sent the board two resolutions, one from Palo Alto and one from Temecula Valley Unified. Which just passed in um December. And Environmental Health Trust has collected the best research on wireless radiation from cell towers as well as information. On the protective ordinances and laws that are being passed across the country and around the world. Uh, such as France, which prohibits wifi and cell towers in all of their elementary schools. Petaluma can be at the forefront of protecting children along with the other districts. That I mentioned, which have already passed resolutions prohibiting cell towers on school sites. And uh considering the preliminary testing that I did as a citizen. Comparing Casa Grande football field to uh the Petaluma High football field. It's a staggering difference in radiation levels that the children are being exposed to, thank you.
Thank you, Piper, all right, next up we have Taryn and after that we'll have Heather.
Pardon me, I'm gonna be reading my notes here, um I mentioned earlier that I'm an analyst, I primarily worked. With technical data analysis, but also with operations and procedures, I um. Uh, I have been currently working in environmental health for for the past five years. Particularly focused on children's environmental health due to the explosive levels of cancers. Um, that are pretty much considered due to environmental changes since I was growing up. Um, I am also a member of the local neighborhood, the community that opposed successfully. The downtown, uh the Creamery Cell Tower, um and I'm here to share with you what the heck happened there. And I'm here to urge you to please find whatever opportunity there is to get that cell tower off a cell uh off a Casa Grande. Or at a minimum, don't let them stay on, don't let them increase the equipment, um. Uh, let's see here, the approval process is highly, highly technical. It is so technical that I couldn't understand it, basically no one could understand it and the neighbors had to hire. An engineer and a cell tower attorney who is located actually on the east coast. They're not easy to find because most of them actually work for the telecommunications industry. What we found is what was represented in concept, in discussions and put forth was not. At all, what is contained in those application documents, the technical drawings. The radiation levels, whether the radiation levels are constant or whether they're varied and they spike. Really important, um as context, T-Mobile's own commissioned report by the Ecological Institute. It recommends radiation levels one thousand times less than the current FCC recommended levels. For anyone that's spending more than four hours in a location at work, at school, at at their homes. Cell tower, uh radiation, wireless radiation has not been tested since the nineteen eighties when nobody had a cell town cellphone. Now we've got towers, everybody at home, multiple people at home have multiple devices, everyone has a router. Scroll through the networks available to you and you see that you're getting fried, no wonder children's cancer rates are off the charts. So back to the application. When there um, there's a difference between a couple of cell tower uh cell antennas, a minor wireless telecommunications facility. And a major tele- can uh telecommunications facility. The one downtown on top of the Creamery, they were representing that to be minor, it was not minor, it was major. Citizens had to go through expense to point that out to the city staff because, pardon me, they're not engineers there, they're not. Electromagnetic engineers in the city and they don't hire them, we got an attorney to present to the city the exact process. All the questions, all the required findings for making a decision, the city couldn't even, pardon my French. They couldn't wrap their heads around that, it is so technical, so I urge you, please stay away, it's riddled with risk. It is so technical, so I urge you, please stay away. It's riddled with risk. Once you let them in, they can ask for more equipment. You can say no to that. But even if it's, if it increases the area at the base station substantially, you can say no to that. But there's a lot you cannot say no to.
Give about 20 seconds.
Thank you. And it will increase the radiation. And we already know, I can't speak to this, but other people have measured what the radiation level is at Casa Grande. And oh my God, it is tens, hundreds, a thousands over the level. So millions of, okay. So I can't speak to that, but thank you.
All right, we have Heather up next. And after Heather, we'll have Paul.
Hello, my name is Heather Gallagher and my child goes to Casa Grande. And I was with Piper when we did the measuring and I was surprised to see what I saw. Underneath the tower, there was a small number of radiation, but as you get further away from the tower and you go towards the classrooms, you go towards the field and you see what the radiation levels are. It's well above, I'd say, what was it, like 80% higher than it really is safe to be at the schools, constantly pinging. And it was very, just surprising. Anyway, my child goes there and we're always in, have wifi radiation around us, right? In here, at our homes, and we can't turn it off. But as a school, we can minimize that, right? We have that power. And I would encourage you guys to look at what everybody here is saying and think about, is it really worth it to do this? There's many studies that say that it's not worth it. And I agree with them. They're from really reputable people. And all of you guys are family, right? And you guys all have family and you're invested in the school. And I really appreciate all of you guys for being here. You're just, all the work that you do is amazing. And thank you for listening to us and hearing what we have to say. And kind of looking a little bit further into the paperwork, right? What they are telling you and what they're not telling you. And see for yourselves what your power can do to help the students, the parents that are coming on campus, the staff on campus, the coaches, all the athletics. I mean, the athletics are getting blasted way more than the whole campus. But the towers can be in a safe place, further away from the schools. They don't need to be on our campuses. And they don't need to be in our neighborhoods because we're neighbors too, right? And all those neighbors that are around us, some of them may be pregnant, some of them maybe have kids that are allergic to the radiation that they're exposed to. There's a lot of problems with it. My brother had a melblastoma from radiation, from wifi exposure, and he didn't die. Thank God. He was saved by the medical industry, but it was from the class 2B carcinogen of the microwave radiation that everybody's exposed to. And, you know, limiting it is all we can do at this point. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Heather. All right, my next two cards are Paul and someone saying that they're seeding their time to Paul. We haven't come across that in a long time, so I'm going to allow it and check with, if we do that in the future.
I probably won't need all the time.
Perfect.
I have two shorter comments and I'll make them both and I'll be less than that.
Sounds good.
I'm Paul McGavin. You got a detailed email from me because I am an expert in this area. I've been working in it for over 10 years. I work nationally at state level and locally. We got a great law passed here in Petaluma that protects us from small cells and residential zones. That's a great thing. So they're not in front of our houses. Very few towns have that. So we should be thankful for that. We also got vetoed estate bills. They can't override our local. So we believe in local control. Your schools have the most local control. You have to understand, these companies, wires companies, lie, cheat, steal, do anything they can to get their way. On this case, T-Mobile screwed themselves. There is no evidence that they ever renewed the permit. Because of that, you can cancel the whole thing. You will stand up in court. You can't even get sued over this because we have a local law that protects you. It says this, "If a use permit or other entitlement for use is not renewed, it shall automatically become null and void without notice or hearing 10 years after it is issued." This thing started in 2006. They allegedly, you know, got it built by 2007. There's no record of any permit, ever, at all. Not for 2007, not for 10 years later, not now. Because they never came forward and got the permit. Hey, they try this all the time. If you don't get the permit, you don't get in trouble and all these other things. They all try to cut a corner. Bang, you caught them. Get rid of this tower. And I'm gonna tell you why. This is a professional RF meter. And this was used, something like this, to measure that tower right by the football field. Now, to put these measurements in perspective, we have to consider how much radio signal strength is needed to get the job done for wires telecommunications. Well, the industry is very clear about that. They have a way to talk about it. Radio signal strength is called decibel-miliwatt, or dBm. It's just a way they talk about it. It's anywhere from minus 115 to minus 85. You could think of 115 as roughly two bars on a cellphone. You could think of minus 85 as five bars on a cellphone. That's the right level. That's the level that is required for people to make calls. The big problem is this. When you put a tower in, right next to the tower, it's much higher than that. And then eventually it goes out to what should be minus 85 dBm. But those people that are there next to the tower, and these are your athletes at Casa Grande, your coaches, which died of cancer recently, and all the fans that come in, I'm gonna tell you how much higher that is. We're gonna consider minus 85 dBm the high range as 1X on the scale. At the east side of the football field is 113 million times higher than that. 113 million, folks. On the west side of the field is 75 billion times higher. At the restrooms between the classrooms 12 and 13 is 27 million times higher than needed for five bars on a cellphone. This makes no sense. You allow them to put a major wires facility right in the middle of your campus and you are damaging and hurting a ton of people unnecessarily. And none of that tower, none of those towers is not needed. You know why? All the towers we need are way over on the hillside up on the east side. And that serves all of that east side. You pull that tower out, there's no significant gap in coverage. That's easily proven. So these radio signal strength measurements are excessive and they're hazardous. Casa Grande's students, teachers, coaches, staff, and any visiting fans are being forcibly exposed to excessive levels of this radio signal strength. It's not good for anyone. So the record contains no evidence that any use permit for the cell tower was renewed in the last 10 years or longer. Ding 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 ding, magic, right there. You don't have to go through any negotiation with these people. You just say, excuse me, we have a law. Did you comply with our law? Oh, you didn't. Great. Let's cancel that guy. We're gonna actually vote tonight and we're gonna say, we're gonna end the operations on that tower. And we're gonna send you a letter and we're gonna tell you to dismantle it. Problem solved. And the good news is they screwed themselves. So now you get to use that. So let me tell you exactly nationally why you might want to really consider doing this, okay? There's been a really important court case. On August 13th, 2021, the wireless world in the US irrevocably changed because on that date, the US Courts of Appeals in the DC Circuit, one rung below the Supreme Court, applies to the entire country. In one case, from Environmental Health Trust, we heard from before, they sued the FCC and won. And this is what the judges ruled, quote, "We mandate that the FCC provide a reasoned explanation for its determination that its RF microwave radiation guideline adequately protects against harmful effects of exposure to microwave radiation. We, in particular, the FCC must provide a reasoned explanation that its testing procedures are protective," which they're not, "and two, we must address the impacts of RF microwave radiation on children." That's our target. "On the health implications of long-term exposure," they only look at short term, "and on the environment," which they tend to not do because the law said you didn't have to look at environment until this lawsuit. Now you have to. The letters that we sent to the board this week included links to 27 volumes of peer-reviewed scientific evidence, 11,000 pages, folks. We're not asking you to read every page. What we are saying is this is exactly the same evidence that's in the record upon which the judges base their ruling. This evidence is irrevocable because it was, one, accepted by these judges, the highest judges in the land. It was certified as probative evidence. Nobody can say, oh, those studies aren't any good. We're not, we can't look at those. Uh-uh. Evidence at the federal court served as the basis for the ruling and the mandate, and it proves that this current guideline they talk about is not protective. That's what it proves. So the FCC is supposed to go back and do this work. They've dragged their feet for two and a half years and they're probably gonna stonewall some more. In the meantime, you guys can come to the rescue. You could take full advantage of that rule, that law that we have in Petaluma. "If a use permit or other time refuse is not renewed, it shall automatically become null and void without notice or hearing 10 years after it is issued." At present, there's no evidence that the record's showing that a use permit was actually put together for this. Problem solved. Please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for everyone coming. Now we will move on to the first discussion information item, which is classified list of positions, which is CSEA positions. Can you tell us a little bit about that, Jason?
Sure. So as I, let's see, as I mentioned in the board item, that we've published a list. It's not a board proof. Why don't we just, we take all those positions, we list them with all the relevant information for our classified positions and they're on our website. With the approval of the Work-Based Learning Coordinator, we added, we want to add that to the list. So that's in this new list that we're sharing with you. Additionally, we have, we've added the position of a bus driver trainer dispatcher position. This is a position that was approved. It was approved in 2008. We tried to, it was, it disappeared in 2011. The position was not hired anymore. We tried to look into negotiations to see if the position was closed out or it was negotiated out. In some way, we couldn't find any evidence of that. So we, we think it just disappeared. So we talked with CSEA. We're adding that position back in as it was in 2011 when it was last filled and at the same range. And we've added that to this list of positions as well. And that's about it. This is not, the list of positions is never something the board approves. These are all positions, like you just approved the Work-Based Learning Coordinator position. This list is just a list of all the positions that have, that are approved within the district. So that's why it's under information because everything on this list is something that you've approved individually. And the list itself is just something that we publish to share all the positions, but not, you don't approve the list itself.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions about the list of positions? All right, moving on to business services, discussing the amendment to the site lease about the tower in question. It looks like we have some flashcards or, it says flashcards. It's funny. I like it. Slides.
The point of Crown Castle is not in any of the documents. Right? So Crown Castle is not part of this agreement.
I will let our chief business official get to that in her presentation.
Okay, so Crown Castle reached out to us and asked for a second amendment to increase the square footage of the current lease. And so we thought that we would start with some background information and then we can discuss it and he will let us know how to move forward. So the original agreement with, so Crown Castle is the agreement, T-Mobile is affiliated with Crown Castle, commenced on October 24th, 2007, with its initial term expiring on October 31st, 2012. The agreement allowed for three extensions at five years each, and the last extension will end on October 31st, 2027. The agreement states premises may be used for the purpose of construction, maintaining, and operating a communications facility, including tower structures, equipment, shelters, cabinets, meter boards, utilities, antennas, equipment, any related improvements in structures and uses incidental. Sorry. Crown Castle owns and operates the communication facility at this site. They currently lease 300 square foot feet and pay $2,888 monthly, and that escalates by 3% annually. Okay, so this is a Google image of where the antenna is on the campus and the shadow. And when the original lease was commenced, we did have to take this to DSA and they did have to do a CEQA. There was no city permit required at the time. So all of our, as a school campus, we go through the Department of State Architecture. The amendment that they're asking for would be to additional ground spaces, an additional 94 square feet for $300 in a month and 150 square foot for $450 per month. And they're saying that this is to better meet the needs of T-Mobile and dish network customers in the area.
Thank you for that. No, you don't get to talk, Paul. Sorry. Like, that's not how this works. That's not how this works. Please listen to me so I don't kick you out of the meeting. I agree with you. Please do not interrupt my meeting. Thank you. I have no interest in entertaining this amendment to the lease.
Me neither.
Yeah. So I don't know if anyone else has any discussion. I don't want to waste our time if we're not gonna...
I just appreciate, I read a lot of the emails and I just thank you guys for coming in because it makes more sense to me when I hear people actually saying it. So thank you for that info. I had no idea. And why would, on earth would we want to expand their lease? That sounds awful.
Well, they, they came to us and that's what they're asking and we don't.
Yeah, we're bringing this up for discussion. There's no recommendation. It's bringing it up for discussion. The company reached out to us to say, this is something from 2007, frankly, wasn't even on my radar. I mean, I'm, you know, looking at the pictures there. I mean, I bring, you know, playing tennis just the other day. Anyway, but we're bringing it for discussion and kind of getting some guidance from...
Let's discuss. So have they, have we renewed those, those five-year extensions since 2012?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Paul. Sorry. I'm going to kick you out if you keep interrupting the meeting.
What, what is our interest in this tower?
My question. I, I don't know.
Besides 33 grand a year, which, you know.
I think that, I think that was the only interest. This is from 2007.
This is from when I was a student at Casa Grande, y'all. I used to walk by that tower every day to get to my ride, like...
We have no obligation to T-Mobile.
No.
I don't.
No.
If, I just want to make sure that I understand that, I presume that the 33 grand was the interest at that time.
Probably. Probably in 2007, people, we didn't have the information they had now. So I, I'm going to guess that money wasn't actually a driving factor that the board at the time was trying to help the community and the school with better service. I, I do not believe there was any monetary motivation behind this.
Yeah, it's not enough money to make or break a campus.
I just want to thank you, just like Ellen did and all of us. You know, those emails really did help me, you know, kind of understand a lot more about what, what this could do, you know? And that, you know, oftentimes we just kind of automatically approve some... oftentimes we just kind of automatically approve something and not realizing that there's really a lot more to it. And you, um, all, all of the emails were really very thoughtful. And your points are really well taken. I really appreciate, I appreciate you coming to the meeting. Since we don't have chat anymore, so, um, and I know it's really hard and I really appreciate the input. It was great food for thought. And I have, um, I mean, I definitely agree that I would not like to go forward with this. I, I have this circled, how does this benefit our students and staff at all? But I also wonder whether it violates the ordinance that was, I believe that somebody said that there was an ordinance that was passed by the city of Petaluma.
Unfortunately, the way schools work, we don't have to comply with a lot of local laws. Like we don't even have to comply with local minimum wage laws because we're state.
So then we wouldn't have, so then we wouldn't be violating the Petaluma ordinance for residential cell tower banning?
We don't believe we are.
Okay, all right.
That doesn't mean we can't.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we won't, we will look in, we will look into the issue with, with our attorneys and see where, where.
And can we end it before?
That's what we, that's what. So I guess the direction that I'm hearing, let me just summarize this because I don't think we need to. We are, we are not moving forward with expansion and we're going to be looking into with our attorneys, does this violate, is there, is there a way out of this? So we'll bring that information back to board.
That would be great. Could we also look at a moratorium on new towers?
We certainly can.
Great, let's do it. Well, we have this board because like Joanna, I was talking to Joanna earlier today and she pointed out that like, some of us are not going to be here in 2027. So I was telling people in emails, like in 2027, I will commit to not renewing the tower. And I was like, I'm not going to be here in 2027, my bad. So let's get a moratorium on new towers so we could vote on that and, um.
Sure.
But yeah, I think it would be great to look at if we can get out before 2027.
The, um, the resolution passed by Temecula Valley specifically states, um, they do currently, like us, have cell towers on their campuses and they will have no more. So we could look at passing that resolution.
Perfect. I love when other districts do the heavy lifting for us. Yeah. Jayden, Philip, do either of you have any strong feelings about? How's the cell coverage at Casa? Are there any dead, dead zones? Subbar, even with a tower right there, it's not good coverage. So what, really, what are we getting? Yeah.
Like, I'm a student athlete and I condition on that field all the time. And I play in the basketball gym, I play in the baseball field and I've never heard about really any of the consequences of having a cell tower. So I really appreciate like the, the insight that you guys bring because like this has not been like aware to me. And all my friends, they all condition on that field year round. So that could really drastically affect all our health in like the long term, so.
I would just like to echo what Philip said. I mean, I was never aware of this issue. I didn't know this was existing on our campuses and I think if students knew what the potential consequences are of being on these fields, it's, it would be clear that most students would feel very uncomfortable. They would feel unsafe. So I think it's great that we're canceling this lease or going to cancel this lease. Um, but yeah, I thank you guys for sharing that information with us.
When, can you go back to that, the, the image? When you, I mean, when you, you're walking in that field, you see the lights, the lights next to it. It looks very much, very similar. Anyway.
Totally. I didn't know what that tower was until a few years ago and I walked by it every single day, like I said. Um, I remember when it went up. So yeah, thank you all for coming and for sharing. And it looks like luckily it's a discussion item. We don't need to vote. We can just tell T-Mobile goodbye for now. Thank you. Now we'll move on to student services, more fun stuff. First reading of amended board policy regarding sexual harassment. Tell us about it, Ismael.
Yeah, so we're just, um, bringing this forward to update, um, to make sure it complies with legal changes and latest recommendations from CSEA. Um, and also the, the distinction here is just outlining the role of the Title IX coordinator. So that's what you have before you in first reading.
Any questions or comments on this one? I remember when I was running for school board and we were definitely not complying with state or federal law. So I'm glad we're staying abreast of it. Maybe not that sort of.
I love the date of 1993.
That's when I was born.
Glad we're doing this. It was time.
And then the following thing is an amended regulation. So it's an amended administrative regulation that just copies the board policy. We always do this with board policies. There's a board policy and then there's an amended regulation. So it's the same, same thing. So moving on, we'll talk about future business. I would like us, I would like to get, keep apprised of Live Oak and what's going on there and what we're able to do working with them moving forward. That's my big one. And then, yeah, like we just talked about a bunch of cell tower related future business. Does anyone else have any other future business that we, that hasn't been discussed? Because I know some of the stuff that has been discussed in the last two meetings is on the, is in the pipeline.
I wanted to talk about how, um, one of the students out on my campus reached out to me recently with the concern they had. Um, and she emailed me and then we talked in person. And she was saying about how she's a, she's an English learner and she has a bunch of English learner friends. And she wanted to, she wanted me to bring up the board, just the issue of not feeling like they have enough resources, um, as English learners. She was talking about the experience of having material being translated, translated to them, but it not being the same as that material being explained to them like directly by an interpreter or person. So I think it's definitely, um, they're suggesting like perhaps like a lot of time for English learners just to get them on the same track as, um, English students. Like for example, during an A+. So I don't really know. I just wanted to bring that up because.
No, thank you. I think it makes sense with LCAP especially. I know one of our goals is, um, English language learners. So maybe there can be some working with the English learner community at Petaluma High and maybe getting them more involved in LCAP or, um, definitely well taken and heard.
And I think if she's receptive, we'd love to, one of us would love to reach out and, and meet with her, talk through, see what the issue is and how we can support her.
With an interpreter or, well, Matthew, Matthew's good. Any other future business items? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:24 PM.
Nice job, Caitlin.